As a body, as a board body, should we be aware of that?
I'm not as concerned with that. I have people that take care of it. So again, it isn't my concern. But if you have a concern for it, that's something you should seek the superintendent's advice on. I've been well aware of what has been going on as the president last year. I would get a note that this is what we're doing because I usually sign those. And that memo went on to the rest of the board. So again, over the past year, I know that it's been, we've been informed quite a bit on the soup that I know of, of the back and forth, and I'm disgusted by it, but I can't help it.
Do we move on from attorney fees or?
You know what, if, real quick, maybe perhaps, and again, it's up to the discretion of the board, but after the next meeting, maybe we can go into executive session afterwards. Instead of sitting here and talking about it for a half hour, why, we go into executive session, he gives a quick update, and we move on. That's my thoughts.
Go ahead and move on, Bill.
Thanks. Okay. Expenditure decreases. Healthcare participation, there's been a decline in that, 377,000. Top of that, we are self-insured for our dental and vision. We're seeing a statistically, statistical decline right around $253,000. As I mentioned, and the property tax revenue is going down, so is the expenditure. So this is the offsetting 100,000. Special education center program costs, as I was talking about, our students transferring or being part of the center program, some of the cost of $281,000 is transferred over to that along with the revenue that's going over there. And if you net all the other items on, remember, that's a 100 million dollar budget. So if you net all the individual, small, minor changes here, there throughout the budget, it's $171,000. So this presentation will be online. People can log into the website and pull it up, see it. So some people like to see the verbiage on it, and you have that. But we also present the same information, a little bit more summarized, more in an Excel document form. And you can see here what total revenues are, 1,784. The bulk of that is, out of that, the bulk of that money is the $1.3 million emitters. Breakdown local revenues, decline of 456,000. Again, all of this is just, it's everything that I just talked about, just more in a summarized form. And then you get into the state revenues of the 2.3 million. And then the intermediate and the federal programs, decline of 101. On the expenditure side, again, this is all the details of everything that we just talked about, of 1,674,928. So let's get down to the fund balance and where we're at. You can see the adjustments, the net adjustments. We come up to a net surplus of 109,806. We had an original budget ending fund balance of 4,474. So that puts us at 4.5, almost 4.6 million. But remember, we had a $528,000 better-than-expected results of, from 1617. That puts us at the 5,112,808 mark. Let me put a note out there, when we talked about all these, all this information at the study session, we did have a $12,988 surplus. That's where, and now it's 109,806 after we went through every line item that's out there. A little bit of history on the fund balance. Back in '12, '13, we had a $5 million fund balance, and then we dipped all the way in '13, '14, down to a million dollars. This is kind of the success, not the kind of success, this is the success story of this district. Since '13, '14, we've been on a tear rebuilding the fund balance. We've gone from a million dollars to the next year, 2 million, then 3 million, then to 5 million. During that period of time, we have given the employees the 1% back that they took a pay cut in during the difficult times through the state of Michigan's funding. And then we also, all MEA members received an $800 bonus. In addition to that, this year, we've also added a 1.91% raise on top of everything that I just talked about. So we've done all this during this period of time, and we're still growing the fund balance. As of right now, let me go through here, as of right now, Danielle and I are looking at the bottom line. When you look at, we're nine months into the fiscal year. We have a contingency line in there, $500,000 to protect the district and, more importantly, the board. As of right now, we don't see that we're going to use that. So it's very likely that we'll be in at 5,600,000. I'm not going to promise that, but I'm going to go out there and just say that as of right now, we're trending towards that, not using that contingency. So we've reached the 5% fund balance. And we've exceeded the Michigan Department Treasury's requirement. We did that in 1617. We were doing it in 1718. If you want to look at a perspective of better, better results in 1617, plus this year's surplus, we're growing the fund balance 638,000 from what we originally budgeted for this year. Questions? John Paul?
It's not a question. I do need to take some time to digest the revised budget again. Really appreciate the study session. I was able to take a lot of comprehensive notes then as well, and can try to piece it all together in my head. Incredible amount of transparency here. But when you said we got to this 5% fund balance and possibly even, even slightly better than that, depending on the contingency needs, but there really should be balloons and streamers and band music playing. Just in terms of magnitude, in one year, from 2012, 2013 to 2013, 2014, we lost 80% of our fund balance in one year, 80% that had to then be made up methodically. It was an all-hands-on-deck effort for all, all key stakeholders in this district contributed to the success of that. But that was very hard work, and to be able to be in this place is just astounding. And to be able to hold sacred the work that's going on in the classrooms, all the more so. So I just want to commend the entire district. It was an all-hands-on-deck effort. There's nobody that was left behind in this effort in making this happen. But specifically, Bill, you and your team for spearheading that effort and, and doing all of the painstaking work on all, every single line item of every single budget in every category, over and over and over again, to figure out where we could save and where we could cut and where we, how we hold the classroom sacred and still recover that 80% that we lost so precipitously and needed to make up. So again, can't thank you enough.
I really appreciate that, and it was a sacrifice of everybody. And what's most appreciated is the board has had to make some very tough choices to get us where we're at, and they've been very, very supportive of our recommendations in getting us to where we need to be.
Any other questions? Mary?
Awesome to have, especially to have the possible extra 500,000 go in there. It's wonderful. As we know, when the auditor came, he told us that 10% or more would be ideal. So we're heading that direction, correct? Like, so we're going to keep going in these incremental steps. I'm just worried that we're going to be okay with 5% and not continue to go higher as our auditor had suggested. So, okay, so that's, I think I have made that point many times, and I want to make sure that we're, I'm hoping that we continue to go. I think 5% is not on the radar anymore with the state, but it's a precarious place to be. And I think history, right there in 2013, we were at 5%, and all of a sudden, bam. You know, we went, we went down to the point where we were in crisis. So if we continue to work on that, and that was our whole point, Member Torres, Member Pickett and I's, point of having budget meetings to discuss options about what we could do. Options, just like we have with the bond issue, options about this, and you know, what if we, what if we did those options? And I guess I have notes again later to talk about it, but it's very pointed here that I think our next meeting that we just, that we all made for the budget is April 26th or something, like over a month away. And then you just had said when you started this progress or presentation that it's April, May that you make the budget, and then we vote in June. So we're going to be learning about the budget, studying it, and probably presented, presented something because that's been past practice. So I'm hoping that we get presented options that can grow the fund balance and do different things. Give raises, you know, positively give raises, grow fund balance, cuts to excessive spending part of the district, all kinds of things, and give us, give us options. That's what I'm hoping.
Any other questions?
I just want to recognize the information that, you know, I feel good about this presentation. Felt we were informed. We had a community meeting, I guess you would call it. There was a study session that didn't happen. But we were able to get a lot of information, just kind of on the projections we're looking at. We're still looking at per pupil funding and what we could or would get. Having a study session where we're all able to sit in a room and talk about the numbers and the money. I'm happy to see the fund balance grow. It looks great. Good work. Good job, and I think we're headed in the right direction here.
Definitely.
I forgot. Okay, I meant to ask in the agenda to have a spot about asking follow-up questions with our last board meeting that I had emailed you, and I-
I'm sorry. I didn't understand the question.
I've, I don't know what. I was looking at the kids, and I didn't add it. I didn't ask to have it physically or actually added to the agenda.
So what did you want to talk about?
Well, I can just ask him now that he's here, but the, I had follow-up questions to the last meeting.
About the budget, around the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's why you didn't need to change the agenda because the budget's on the agenda.
Well, I forgot to ask, so yeah, so here we are. All right, so one of the questions that I wanted to just clarify in that meeting, and it was frustrating to me that that meeting wasn't televised. It was put over at Prairie, and only the people that were in the room saw, you know, heard, heard the answers about what happened. And I think that's, I think our next budget meeting on April 26th, I hope that it's televised and here at this facility. Okay, there's a couple of things. So, okay, the data that I talked about with you that day at our meeting came from the transparency buttons on the website. And one of the things that stood out when I looked at it, and the transparency button is very easy to get to, and savvy parents, I'm sure, are looking at that data and comparing schools. It's literally just a few clicks. I had noted at that meeting that, that under the operating expenditures tab for last year, under instructional expenditures, we spent 57.7% of our budget, while neighboring districts spent more. And we're a 100 million dollar budget, or district, so 57.7 is 57 million. Huron Valley is, they're about 100 million dollar too, and they spent 61%, so almost 4% more in instructional expenditures. And the whole thing about the transparency tabs, it's supposed to be consistent from district to district so you can compare, so it's not apples and oranges and different things. So, so when you look at that, anybody would look at that and go, hmm. Wild Lake spends 67%, and this is a percentage of budget, so it's not dollar amount. So it's over 10% more in Wild Lake, West Bloomfield 62, Clarkston 66, Holly 62. And the only district that's around us where kids might choose to go is Pontiac, and that's at 46.9. So when I look at it, and we talked about it that night, it's a percent of budget that I believe shows our priority of focus, like where we spend our, where we choose to spend our money. And interestingly, the same document for Waterford, but the year before, in '15, '16, we were higher in that category. We had, we spent 59% in the instruction. And then, so looking at where the money shifted or went to, it shifted into a category called Central and Other Support Services, and it went, that went from 3.6 up to 6.4 million. So a 2.8 million increase away from Instruction into Central. You had thought at the time, Bill, that, but you wanted to check that it was due to a one-time-only expense for the senior center write-off. So it's just verifying that that is indeed what it was, and you had sent me an email that it was. But my question is, can you explain what that means? I was thinking about it later. What does a one-time write-off for a senior center mean?
It means the senior center is an organization that has a, we have a receivable, we had a receivable on our books to receive money from them. They're not able to pay it. So I took it off the books, and I think that's an important point, too, is during this period of time, when you look at these fund balances here, that I was able to get the, or we were able to get the balance sheet in much better shape. So we wrote off the senior center receivable. It's not collectible. Forty years ago, the great majority of it, 40 years ago, when they established the senior center, they, they asked the senior center to pay them back after one year's expenditures. So we had this receivable on the books. Well, that's, we wrote that off.
Okay, so when that occurred-
So we caught them up. We got them back on track of where they're at.
So when that occurred, that was a, a public board meeting decision to, to make that expense? Or how did that expense decision get made?
No, it's proper accounting with the GAAP rules, generally accepted accounting principles.
Okay, so is, is it, is that how it looks where it came, that money had to come from somewhere, and it came from?
Correct.
Came from what?
Well, we wrote it off. We put it, it had to go into Central. There's no other place to put that cost.
Okay, so it wasn't brought up at a public meeting that we were going to be doing that, just got done? Okay, and that huge shift of money is-
I just want to, just, I don't mean to interrupt, I'll go back to your question, but the audit, our, you and you are audit team, is aware of this?
Oh, correct, yes, absolutely.
Has approved that this is the place that it should have been if you're going to write off that kind of expense.
Correct, correct. I mean, when you, when you analyze what a receivable is and you determine if it's not collectible anymore, you need to write it off. That's not a board decision. That's, that's finance.
I understand. You're the only department that we pay 40-some thousand dollars to make sure you're doing your job.
Correct, correct.
Right, I just want to understand it, and not implying that it's not, I just wanted to know what it was. It just had a one-time senior center write-off, and I wanted to know what that meant.
I do like to point out, though, I know that you've compared us against districts. And in that study session, though, every district has a different demographic. And I'd mentioned before during that study session that Huron Valley, for example, they don't have the same special ed count. We're fourth highest in special ed. We're, we're number one in at-risk funding. We are third in federal funding. So they have different demographics, and when you quote those percentages in different districts, it's not apples to apples, even though we record the information as apples to apples, where the actual demographics will change what those percentages are. In the case of Wild Lake, for example, they're a whole harmless district. They have probably $1,500 more per student than we do. I'm not sure. Don't quote me on that. Yeah, so they're $8,300, you know, and so they're able to, under proposal A law, they're able to tax the local homeowner more money to support their schools, and they put that all into instruction. They don't have the same demographics nor the same funding that we do. And when you talk about federal programs and at-risk dollars and so forth, those items don't, they don't necessarily automatically go into the classroom, they're support. And that's why the support costs are more. Their supplemental costs, or their supplemental support for our students, they're not necessarily, sometimes they are, but not necessarily always in the classroom. So when you have those costs for those grants, and we're not going to turn those grants down just to change the percentage, we're going to keep funding that support for those kids and not turn down these grants because they need it.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that if you're a parent and you're looking on that list, that's the impression that you get. So if we could provide, you know, have this type of questioning so people can hear why it's different, then that's, I think, important. Okay, I'm, again, I'm going to tell you, I told you this multiple times, just because I asked about it, it doesn't, it's not an insult. It doesn't mean that I don't think you're doing your job. But when I went on the transparency page, it was just right there in front of me. So if I'm wondering it, I've got to believe that other people are wondering it, too. So I just wanted to ask, and if that's an answer, then that's the answer, but. All right, so then another, another question that I had that night was about the personnel expenditures. We spent more, way more, millions more in an area, so I asked about it. Again, another thing, it's on the transparency website. You go to the identical, identical pages on other districts, and we just spent a lot more in a certain segment, and you answered back and told me that it was about an energy bond principle and interest payment. And you said, "Most districts do not participate in the energy bond program, and the final bond payment will be in 2022."
Correct.
Okay, so how much was, I guess, it was 2,410,000. How much was senior center? How much is energy bond? How much more, how much in energy bond do we have to keep paying until 2022?
The energy bond's probably going to go about 1.1 to 1.2 million dollars. That's general fund. It's energy, it's principal payments of this year in particular that you were asking about. That was the 1617 data that you were looking at, was 845,000. And then the interest payment was 270,000. And then those payments will continue through 2022, and then that'll free up the general fund for about million one to million two. The energy bonds was a program we entered into in '07. We were starting, in the state of Michigan, we were starting to get into the crisis of, the housing crisis throughout the state. We did, we entered in much earlier than the nation, really. In fact, for most of the 2000s, we didn't ever get out of the recession, even though the other, the rest of the country enjoyed it. But our property values started to decline at that time, and we had, the 2003 bond issue was 100 million dollars. We issued several million dollars, and we did the high school renovations with the PACs, the, or the performing arts centers, pool and fitness centers, and the gyms, and did renovations like that. But what ended up happening is we went for a very long period of time where you couldn't issue bonds because property values had dropped. So if you entered into what's called an energy bond program where you can use general fund dollars, issue bonds, and then you can make improvements, much-needed improvements, because we had to get some of our boilers and the pumps, boiler pumps throughout the building, and then a lot of lighting improvements, and so that's what all this money was spent on. So here we are, you know, 11 years later, we're still paying on it, but, and we'll, we'll continue to pay that. And for the most part, at the time, most of this, even though we did very needed capital improvements, a lot of the energy cost offsets at the time, what you would pay in utility bills helped to pay for this because there was energy savings with the new boilers and new pumps and the lighting.
Okay, so senior center's done one time, and then, so the senior center was about a million or a little bit less than a million?
Yeah, a little less, yeah, 900.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
John Paul, do you have questions?
Yeah, okay.
Real quick, if I could.
Sure. Yep. And I just want to, real quick, and I know people, it's hot in here, and I apologize. But I want to piggyback on what Ms. Sutherland said, that, you know, since I've been on this board, it seems like we've cut, 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 and we got down at times really to a tough level. And it was tough for everybody. But I always, I always think of this song from my daughter in Elementary High School musical, "And We're All in This Together," and it's in my head now. But I look at your team in the administration, you know, you're sitting there working hard, working extra hours, coming up with, how are we going to stay above water and start raising this? And you're bringing it to us, and we're making the tough decisions that, you know, sometimes people are upset about, but we do it because we know we need to. And then we have our employees who took cut after cut after cut to keep this district afloat and make things work. And then we had our community who passed the bond issue overwhelmingly. You know, other districts were getting their bond issue defeated, and ours was passed by a wide margin. And so I look at that and think, we're all in this together. We all need to pat each other on the back, every single one of us, from us to you, to staff, to community, everybody. We're moving on up, and we're going in a great direction, and I think we kind of hit the bottom, and things are going up, and I think everybody deserves a big pat on the back and a big applause.
I was going to end up putting Mr. Pickett to call.
Do you want me to sing that?
No, I appreciate it.
No.
So next, we move to audience comments on action items. I have no green cards on action items. Is there anyone that would like to address the board on any action item? Move to the approval of the minutes. Secretary Pickett?
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the February 15th, 2018 regular meeting, February 21st, 2018 study session, and the February 21st, 2018 closed session. ISO move.
Support.
Moved by Secretary Pickett, supported by Member Sutherland.
Which one was this?
Any questions or comments?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
The February 21st closed session, I believe there were only three members present for that. I'm not sure that that constitutes a meeting, or maybe it does. This was right, right before the study session?
Yeah, no, you're right. I, I saw that, and I was actually, I was looking at it tonight, and I think she's, yeah, Ms. Sutherland's correct.
We did end up with four, I think.
We just, when we, when we voted to go into closed session, we only had three of us.
We never voted.
And so we determined it would just be a discussion. So I, I don't know if it matters if we-
Well, it does matter. I mean, this is inaccurate, yeah. We didn't have a closed session.
So how would you like it to read? Because when you want to start the regular meeting, we had that, the study session.
When did we start it? I, I wasn't, I didn't take the minutes, but I know that when we, we didn't vote-
I'm just looking for an opinion for those of three of us that were there. Three of us started, right?
There was three of us, right.
By the time we actually got to six o'clock, we had five of us there.
I think just what Ms. Sutherland said and Ms. Mark, and it just, I don't, I don't know if these closed sessions, that they're not, they're not accurate, you know?
Actually, it is accurate now because it says it happened at 5:37, and there were four of us at that point. So I think it actually is accurate.
Oh, yeah, the time got corrected, right?
Yep.
It does have roll call.
Yeah, and you weren't, Joan wasn't there at a roll call?
Right.
And we didn't even do a roll call because there was, we did, and then there was no people, there wasn't enough.
So we determined it wasn't going to be a closed session.
And I said aye when I went in, so I don't, I don't know.
Does it matter if we have a closed session? I, I don't know. I don't know legally, that's, I, I don't know. I just, I'm, you know, pointing out that it's, it wasn't correct, but how we handle it, I don't know.
I don't want a legal opinion.
No, I don't either.
No.
You're right.
And then, um-
So I don't even have that, is it separate here? Oh, it's a, that's right, separate, because Megan keeps them separate.
Right.
So we just going to go with the study session minutes that started at 5:35? And we're okay with adjourning at 7:55?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll just strike the closed session minutes from?
Okay.
So do I need to make a motion to modify that since we already have a motion on the table?
You can modify your motion.
Well, okay, I modify that the motion, we take out the February 21st, 2018 closed session. ISO move.
All those and striking the-
Is it 18th or is it February 21st?
I said, didn't I say 21st, 2018?
Maybe you did.
Maybe I did, I don't know.
So we're going to strike the February 21st, 2018 closed session. Any questions, comments?
We're going to approve February 15th regular meeting and February 21st study session.
I want to add something to the eight, the minutes of the 18th, of the regular meeting on the 15th, sorry.
Okay, okay.
Okay, yeah.
I'm going to vote to get this one out, then we'll come back to you. And you can just talk the other.
So all those in favor of striking the closed session? Post? Motion passes. Mary, were you a yes? I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, yes.
Six zero. Okay, so you have, there's a motion to approve the regular meeting and the study session.
Do I need to remake that motion?
Go ahead.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the February 15th, 2018 regular meeting.
No, I want to add to them. That's what I was saying. I want to add to the-
Soon as we get it on the, on for a vote, you can-
And the February 21st, 2018 study session. ISO move.
Support.
It's been supported. Any comments? Mary?
Yes, um, let's see, I want to see, you did a regular meeting minutes. I looked at them and noticed, where's the board comment part? Business. All right. Okay, yeah, in the, in the discussion items on the-
Page, are you on a page?
Yep, it is, well, page four of the minutes. It's under board, under discussion items, board, Ed of Education reports. First paragraph, mine, says, "Member Barcon spoke regarding board discussion on bylaws and policies. The meeting held on February 8th. The location change of the study session scheduled on February 21st and presented a PowerPoint regarding hiring practices outlined in policies." And I would like it to, it wasn't just hiring practice, it was that I believe that we are violating our policies with our- violating our policies with our, we are violating our, our policies regarding the hiring practices.
So you understand that all your comments are actually part of the minutes? Verbatim.
If someone looked this up, it doesn't say that I had a concern about a violation.
No, I go to the bottom of it and I click on the link that shows me the video.
I'd like this to say that it says violation, that I had it be a violation. Otherwise, people will just think I talked about the policies. And then, and my whole purpose is that we have $7 million of unchecked spending in hiring, and I would like to have that be reflected in the minutes.
I would not like that assertion reflected in the minutes.
Anyone else like to comment on the minutes? For those in the audience who don't realize there are minutes, we do broadcast these minutes and the full, the full, every word I say is on video and recorded. Obviously, Megan summarizes these for the board. These are our minutes, so. All those in favor approving the minutes? Opposed? Motion passes five, one. Accounts payable for February 2018. Treasurer Sutherland?
Accounts payable for February 2017-18. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the check and electronic funds transfer register for the month of February 2017-18 as listed on pages one through 153 and fifth third account statement, pages one through, one through three. Invoices have been processed by accounts payable and purchasing per requisition submitted by various departments, and all are within the prescribed budget allocations. ISO move.
Support.
Moved by Member Sutherland, supported by Member Patricia. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Motion passes six, zero. Financial statement?
Yes. The Board of Education has received a statement of revenues and expenditures for the eight months ended February 2018.
Thank you. New business, Secretary Pickett.
Superintendent's recommendations, 75-17-18, retirements, resignations, leave of absence expirations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the resignations and retirements presented. ISO move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
I have a question. So it's, that was 11A?
11A.
11A, okay.
11A1.
So on here...
11A1.
11A1, okay. So on here, because I'm just trying to find out the distinction, why we get, we have four teachers on here, their effective date, their, where they're going to be teaching, or if they resigned or retirement or whatever, and we learn about them. And then on the next page, we have tons of detail, too. So I'm wondering, why, why do we do this? Why do you write this up for us?
For policy for certified personnel.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes five, six, zero.
Superintendent's recommendation, 76-17-18, teaching contract changes and appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the teaching contract changes and appointments presented for the 2017, 2018 school year. ISO move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Same thing, this is teaching contract changes, appointments, and we have teachers on here that, we have who they're replacing, very detailed. We have people who are going from 100% to 110%, getting a pay increase of 10%. We have that on here. And that is on here. You do all this work and present it to us because it's in the policy, correct? All right. As I presented a few board meetings ago, the exact same wording is in the policy for support staff, and we do not do that. They have become, they've become Blue Book employees and become invisible to us. Why is it that the policy for the support staff is not followed, but the exact same wording for the policy for professional staff is followed?
I've been following past practice of the board for presenting administrators and certified personnel.
Okay.
They're not certified personnel.
Right, but it doesn't matter in terms of our policies if you read it. And that's what, I know Dr. Wonderlick had said that to, to us as a board, that past practice of not following policy is the reason why we don't follow it today, and I don't think I could get away with that as an employee and people...
Well, it's a board policy you need to direct to the board, I mean, she doesn't control board policy.
But she should be following board policy and doing the same exact practice for support staff. And so...
The board doesn't do it for support staff.
But it's our policy to do so.
It's also our policy that the superintendent's in charge of the district, and we give him the authority to.
But it's in his contract that he has to follow board policy.
Okay.
Right? And so because of not doing this, we have seven, over $7 million of unchecked hiring spending. And clearly, you keep track of even support staff in this way. You'd have to as an HR director to keep track of who's hired where. So I guess I'm very bothered that we do not do that for support staff. We know that, we just learned from the superintendent that he gave a raise to a custodian and promoted him, and we don't know how much the raise was. We don't know where it came from because he wasn't a contract, you know, the past practice didn't do it. But I'm saying that as a board, we need to stop that and have past practice, or have our current policies be followed.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one right here. On the, on just the prior page, there's a couple of retirements and they're effective later in the year. It's all right, it'll be quick. And then there's two that are resignations effective March 2nd, February 22nd, but then I don't see anybody replacing them on the next page. Why would that be?
Well, first of all, the retirements are, one's effective in June 28th.
Oh, no, not those two. Those are, I'm sorry.
All right. For the resignations?
Yeah.
I do believe the one is on the second page for Sean Brown.
Of course, it says Sean Brown, right in front.
Right, yeah. And the other one was a leave.
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah.
Before you, Clark, there was a concern about somebody getting a 10% raise. It was regarding an increase from seconds, a tenure contract. Can you explain why they get the extra 10%?
That's for an overage for, they are teaching additional class during their conference period, so that's a certain percentage of their day.
Which is followed by the teacher's contract.
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed?
No, I was, I was in favor. I just got it up late.
Motion passes six, zero.
Superintendent's recommendation, 77-17-18, resolution, National School Breakfast Week. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution proclaiming the week of March 5th through the 9th, 2018 as National School Breakfast Week, encouraging all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hope of achievement of a more healthful citizenry for today and the future. ISO move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. I just want to point out that this was the week of March 9th, 5th to 9th, which would have been our last board meeting, but it certainly, it's important that we recognize our nutritional and food service staff, and so that's why we're still voting on this. Joan?
I think it would, they are not only amongst the best in the state, but they are among the best in the nation, and they have been awarded many times as such. So it is not a little thing for us to acknowledge and show our immense appreciation for the work that they do every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Superintendent's recommendation, 78-17-18, resolution, National Library Week. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution proclaiming the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018 as National Library Week, encouraging all residents to visit and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarians. ISO move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any comments? Questions? John Paul?
I'd just like to encourage the community to actually get out to the libraries and see all the innovations and the things that are happening. You know, there's areas for children to read books at, with their parents. You can actually rent DVDs, you can get audiobooks, all kinds of things. And I think it's one of these gems in our community that I think people, really over the past five to six years, when we started to see the economy go down, people were utilizing the library more, and people really started to realize what a gem it was. Library membership actually went up in our community, and it stayed strong. So this is a resolution and it's symbolic of sorts, but I would encourage everybody to get out there and, and go to their library. We have a wonderful library here in Waterford with a lot of resources, and the kids love it.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Superintendent's recommendation, 79-17-18, Michigan Department of Transportation Performance and Identification Resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached performance and identification resolution required by the Michigan Department of Transportation. ISO move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions? Any comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Superintendent's recommendation, 80-17-18, Mott High School Spanish trip to Costa Rica. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Mott High School Spanish class trip to Costa Rica, March 28th through April 5th, 2019, as presented. Approval would be rescinded if the area to be visited is issued a travel warning. ISO move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Consideration of Certain Purchases, Treasurer Sutherland?
Superintendent's recommendation, 81-17-18, Contract Award Bid Package 18-03, Mason Middle School renovations and Mott High School HVAC upgrades. It is recommended that the Board of Education award contracts for bid package 18-03 on the following summary of bids for Mason Middle School renovations and Waterford Mott High School HVAC upgrades. Total award package is in the amount of $6,320,972. The funding source is our 2016 Bond Series Two. ISO move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any comments or questions?
Thank you to our community.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you to our community.
Especially when you look at the stuff it is, and sometimes they don't see it when we're finished, but it's a, creates a great education facility, so. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Superintendent's recommendation, 82-17-18, Contract Award T2 Video Surveillance and Cabling Infrastructure. It is recommended that the Board of Education award a contract for video surveillance and cabling infrastructure to AMCOM. The total award package awarded is $567,605. Funding source is the 2016 Bond Series Two, and ISO move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Patricia?
Bill, I see that we've, Barton Mello has made a recommendation of these companies. That's something a little bit new. I know there are new construction people, or do I just not remember them helping out with the...
They're the, they're the construction managers, so yeah, they, they're, I've been including, we always get a recommendation from our construction managers, just that I've been including that to go through the details so that you have more...
That they're just you looking at cement and iron and stuff?
I'm sorry, repeat that.
No. Have we used these contractors before that are getting recommended?
Yeah, we've dealt with many of them, and Barton Mello's dealt with all of them.
Okay. Thank you.
I always get a question after we buy cameras about why are we putting cameras? It's a fact of life that we need to keep our facilities safe. We've been doing that for well over 10 or 15 years, and this, we work very closely with all the experts, experts and our local law enforcement, and it's just really enhancement to trying to keep our buildings as safe as we can.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Superintendent's recommendation, 83-17-18, Contract Award Asbestos Removal, Haveland and Houghton Elementary and Mason Middle School. It is recommended that the Board of Education award contracts for the asbestos removal at Haveland and Houghton Elementary and Mason Middle School to Trust Thermal Abatement Incorporated. Bid number one for Haveland and Houghton in the amount of $97,000. Bid number two for Mason Middle School in the amount of $102,000 with a total bid award of $199,000. The funding source for this is again the 2016 Bond Series Two, and ISO move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Rob?
Again, this, have we used this company before?
Yes. They've, they've done the asbestos removal extensively in the district, and they know our buildings inside and out, so they certainly, you can see just how competitive they've been. They're much lower than everybody else.
Because again, them at $199, and I have one here for over a million. So I just want to make sure they're gonna get it all.
Yeah, just, it's just their experience in our buildings.
Okay.
You know, I want to, I want to add, too, that Nova Environmental, they, they run air sampling throughout the entire process, every hour. So we have an oversight company over this company to make sure they're doing their job.
So they're not gonna do halfway or say, "Oh, it's all covered. We are checking to make sure that it is, that it is done there," just saying they get it.
Yes, and that they're following the necessary safety protocols to make sure that nothing gets airborne.
Okay, thank you.
Does that cost for Nova come to the board? Is that included in this bid package or is that a separate?
It's a consulting fee.
Less than the $23,000, I assume?
Well, not necessarily, it's just consulting. So in this case, it's the same as when we did French Associates or pick the construction manager.
Okay. So that's not something that we have to approve because it's determined to be consulting? Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Discussion items. Yay, spring, spring break, April 2nd through 6th.
I like your optimism, John.
With Good Friday observed on March 30th. So there'll be no board meeting scheduled on April 5th. We'll have celebration of learning on Scholastic Art Awards. We'll have information on the Waterford Academic Achievement endorsement, information on the Waterford Reeds. We will take action on bid packs on transportation site remodeling improvements, Riverside roof replacement, roof replacement at Culver and Kettering, and we'll also take action on the revised 2017-18 budget. Is there any Board of Education reports? John Paul?
So I had an opportunity to go to the rescheduled collaborative study presentation that they had Oakland, had at Oakland schools. It was just this past week, and very informative information, again, talking about the cost of what it is to educate a student. What the numbers show, or the study shows, is that the number is about $9,590, which would show that our school district is underfunded per pupil at the state level. Um, that number is raw, and as we saw in the presentation by Dr. Wonderlick, I believe it was at the last board meeting, it, it does not include monies for transportation, uh, for ESL, uh, doesn't account for, uh, for poverty levels. The cost of educating a preschooler is about fourteen thousand dollars, fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. And really what the, the collaborative study shows is that the current funding system that we have, uh, at the state level is out of date. Um, it's about twenty-five years old, it's very cookie cutter, and it doesn't account for the differences that we see in districts. Um, every district is unique, um, so really what we look at, look for is for adequate and equitable funding for our districts. So as I've said before, what the collaborative study has done, and it's given us a roadmap, um, and school board members were in attendance, it was school board members with Oakland County School Board Association that were at the presentation that I was at, and we were really encouraged to use the study as a roadmap to contact our legislators, to lobby our legislators, to, uh, inform our community that there is more monies that are needed for our school districts, and in particular, it's very important to Waterford kids, to Waterford students. So if we want to actually have an opportunity to implement some really good positive change and really help the kids of our community, uh, we should be lobbying our legislators for additional fundings and per pupil cost for kids and for school districts like ours. Um, I also had an opportunity to attend the, um, Oakland County Reeds event that was actually canceled, um, so we've had a number of snow days and a number of things that have been canceled, but, um, I just happened to actually drive by, knowing that it was canceled, I was, I was a guest reader, my daughter and I, my four-year-old, and, uh, she was really excited to see Wilbert the Wombat and all of the people from the Waterford schools, so she was remembering, uh, last year, Wilbert the Wombat was the star of the show, and, uh, she kept telling me, Dad, can we, can we just drive by? Can we just drive by? Kept telling her, I said, no, we gotta go to school, I said, it's, it's, it's not gonna happen today. So I drove by, 'cause I'm a parent and I cave, so, and when we drove by to our surprise, we saw a school bus in, in the little loop there. So we pulled in, I said, I thought it was canceled, and so we walked in, and soon as we walked in, uh, the person that was there with Oakland Schools said, well, we got two guest readers right here, so we got a, a, a whole bus full of kindergarteners that just came in from, uh, Clarenceville, I believe it was. Um, so I said, let's do this. So I called a friend, uh, to get another guest reader over there. So we had us and then some of the, uh, personnel from Oakland Schools and a bus full of kindergarteners, uh, spent two hours doing some, some reading and some activities, and, um, it was a whole lot of fun. So I think really, uh, the moral of the story is, is that, uh, you know, you, you just never know what can happen, you know, what kind of fun you can have, uh, and, and it just happened to work out. Um, I'm hoping that they reschedule it, uh, because it is a, a great event, um, that really promotes reading, and it happened to be on Dr. Seuss's birthday, um, and I, I hope that they reschedule it this month, but I'm not sure, I haven't heard any word, uh, that they have. And lastly, I wanted to make a comment about National Walkout Day, uh, for our students. Um, I have been following the stories on, uh, the mass shootings and what happened in Parkdale very closely. As a school board member, I think all of us have to an extent, we've, and people have reached out to us in the community, we're reading articles about it, uh, we're, we're, you know, seeing posts on Facebook and things of that matter. Keith, I was in contact with him several times yesterday, uh, he informed me of the, what was happening in the school district, and we took precautionary me- measures, and I'm especially proud of the fact that, um, we allowed the students to do what they wanted to do. If, if they wanted to partake in, uh, a peaceful protest, uh, they had the opportunity to do that. And we provided them safety and precaution to do that. If they didn't want to, we didn't begrudge them, they had every opportunity to stay in school and, and not partake in it. And I think one of the beauties of it was, um, and I talked with, you know, our superintendent about this yesterday, this was an educational opportunity for our kids, you know, making something good out of at least a tragedy, that there's this opportunity for kids to learn a firsthand, real-life world experience in, in civics and social studies, uh, in, in the political process, uh, where you stand on a particular issue. So I just wanna accommodate the, uh, or really, uh, praise the, um, Waterford School District for the efforts that, that we took in keeping our kids safe, whether they wanted to partake in the National Walkout Day or they did not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob? April twenty-fifth, uh, is the Waterford Youth Assistance Recognition Night. I don't know if Grant is here, he's the president, if you're gonna say something about it too? Maybe? Maybe not. But in any event, it is coming up April twenty-fifth. Um, it is a great night to recognize any students, kids from our community who have gone kind of above and beyond and did some great things, whether it's, it's volunteering, being part of clubs, um, they get awards, they get certificates, it's a really neat thing. I, I believe they still have a few days left to get those nominations in? Yes?
Tomorrow is the deadline.
Tomorrow is the deadline?
Accept them on a fax machine, so I would imagine if we walk in the office on Monday and they're in the fax machine.
You'll still do it.
To know when, whether you may do five o'clock deadline or not.
There you go, but it's, it's a great night for some great kids to be recognized, and I really encourage if you know a neighbor or a student or, or a friend's, friend or something that has done some, some nice volunteer work or great things, nominate them and let them be kind of, um, get some awards, get some recognition for their work, um, they certainly deserve it. And then, um, real quick, I want to personally say thank you to a few people at Kettering, um, the President, Ms. Cooper, Noreen, Lenz, who's the office secretary, the, I think she does a ton there at Kettering, she runs the whole building, um, and then, the counselor, I can never think of his name, but...
Ryan Moore.
Ryan Moore, that's it, thank you. Um, but last Monday evening, uh, my daughter, she fell at dance, she tore her meniscus, her knee is all messed up, um, she's out of dance. That next morning was actually, I'm gonna be a bragging dad here a little bit, the picture for the select fifty that she was voted to be a part of, and she really wanted to be a part of that picture, and I know another few parents out here whose son is in that as well. Um, you know, you get to be a part of the select fifty one time in your life, it's, it's a cool thing. And she wanted desperately to go, but she was in crutches in a wheelchair, her leg was in this huge brace, straight out, she couldn't move, and I talked with Ms. Cooper, and she said, if you can get her here, we'll take her the rest of the way. So we got her there in a car in a backseat, and when we pulled up, uh, they came out in the freezing cold, and it was snowing with a wheelchair, they helped actually lift her up to get her in the wheelchair. As they got her in, probably four or five kids that were part of that group came up and helped push the wheelchair, they got her up to where the group was gonna be, the kids were helping her out, they got her in there in the middle, so her brace wasn't showing, they were kinda holding her up from the side and from the back, and so she got to be in that picture. And it just, I, I can't say thank you enough to all of those that helped, because again, to some it might seem minor, but to her, to us, it was a huge honor for her to be a part of that, and, and it's, you know, you get that picture and part of that group one time and one time only in your life, so I really wanna say thank you to those who helped getting her in there and making her be available to be in that photo, it, it means the world to, to her, and I know to my wife and I, so thank you.
And I saw the photo, and you never know that she has a torn meniscus in the photo.
No, no, exactly.
Any other board reports?